Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Chief, three O P leaders, please. Thank you very much. Mr. Reader, we have an addition to the agenda?
Well, there is one adjustment to the agenda. There's an item request from the city of El Centro. I came in after our committee was voted, so I would ask for a motion to add ratification of a support letter from the city of El Centro as item B four of the consent. Okay? And I believe we should have copies of that support letter.
So with that, okay, so we'll move on to...
So you need a motion?
So I'll interpret the motion for that.
Make a motion.
Got a motion, second?
Councilmember Burnwood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Abissa Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor Amparano?
Yes, so that'll be item B four.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, report a closed session?
Yes, there was discussion of the council regarding performance evaluation of the city manager. Direction was given, no reportable action. There was one item of existing litigation which is listed on the agenda. Item E, direction was given to council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now moving on, public comments. There's a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council on these matters. And for matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council jurisdiction, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes to each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments? Did we get anything?
No.
Seeing no public comments, we'll be moving on to presentations. We'll move on to item A one. It'll be proclamation for presentation of World Down Syndrome Day. With that, I have proclamation here that reads, "City of Imperial proclamation, March twenty first, twenty twenty-four. March twenty first, twenty twenty-four is World Down Syndrome Day. Whereas World Down Syndrome Day is a global observance dedicated to raising awareness about the Down Syndrome and promoting inclusion and well-being of individuals with Down Syndrome in our community. And whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic condition that occurs when the individual has an extra copy of chromosome twenty-one, this condition affects people of all races and economic levels globally. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day is celebrated on March twenty-first of each year, and it signifies the uniqueness and contributions of individuals with Down Syndrome to our society. And whereas this year's World Down Syndrome Day theme is "End the Stereotypes", because stereotypes significantly harm, cause significant harm to the quality of life for people living with Down Syndrome. And whereas much progress has been made for people with Down Syndrome through the provision and hard work of parents, self-advocates, medical professionals, researchers, educators, and nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, I do hereby proclaim March twenty, March twenty first, twenty twenty-four as World Down Syndrome Day in the city of Imperial. And the Imperial City Council is committed to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment for all members of our community. And we join the global movement to increase awareness, promote understanding, and celebrate achievements and potential for individuals with Down Syndrome. Passed and adopted on this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-four at a regular meeting of Imperial City Council." Thank you very much. I think we're gonna have a presenter for this, that'll be Stacy Amparano.
So first off, I wanted to thank you, Miles. We wanted to thank you, thank you. Yeah, so thank you so much for the proclamation from all the families here today and all the folks who couldn't make it. I know a lot of us are coming out of our routines, but this is bedtime, so breaking up those routines for our little ones is big. But this is bigger, this is very important for us to come and to say a really big thank you to the city of Imperial. You did a great job explaining Down Syndrome in your proclamation. But this day is, it's really important to show that everyone, regardless of their ability, deserves respect and inclusion in our communities. So one way that my family likes to celebrate Down Syndrome is something called Rock Your Socks. So I did do it today, I knit colorful mismatched socks. So I encourage all of you tomorrow to rock your socks to celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. And then I also brought some little bracelets and stickers for, to help you celebrate tomorrow as well. But even if you don't rock your socks and you don't wear the bracelets I brought, I just hope you can also celebrate by simply showing kindness and inclusivity towards all individuals for all the needs of our community. So with that, thank you very much. And I'll open that to you if you have anything to say.
Please.
My name is Seraphim Blacko Tia, and I didn't prepare anything. I just showed up, but thank you so much. This is really, it means a lot to us. And I hope that this is a start for a community movement as well, that our hearts are visible and made available to all of our people with all abilities, that our roads and our fire department, you know, they can get treated on some D C P R to tell for disabilities and how our bodies are different. But that, that there is a movement for all of these things that can dominate our head and to have an impact to the community.
Thank you. So, just notice, we have the same last name. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next proclamation, presentation for Women's History Month. So, this proclamation, City of Imperial proclamation, March twenty twenty-four is Women's History Month, says whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity who have challenged the social and legal structures that have kept women labor underappreciated and underrepresented. And whereas women have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women not only worked to secure their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also were principal advocates in the ar- arbiologists, tempers, mental health reform, industrial labor, and social reform movements, as well as modern civil rights movements. And whereas pioneer teachers, as pioneers, teachers, mothers, homemakers, soldiers, nurses, and laborers, women continue to play a vital role in American economic, cultural, and social life. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women has consistently been undervalued in the literature, leadership, teaching, and studies of American history. And it is therefore fitting that we recognize their numerous accomplishments. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the City, Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March, twenty twenty-four as Women's History Month in the city of Imperial. And call upon all citizens to mark their month with appropriate observance in honor and achievements of American women. Passed and adopted on this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-four at a regular Imperial City Council meeting. Thank you. How about we come to the front? I think all you guys have made a contribution, so. Let's take a big group picture. If we might have Susan.
Right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, thank you guys very much for participating and helping out in that. Moving on to A three, swearing-in ceremony and badge pending for incoming chief.
Raise your red hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly affirm.
I, Erin Reel, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of Ca- the State, the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
So, again, thank you, this is a tremendous opportunity. It's been, it's been part of an amazing, amazing journey for me. And well, I'd have you know that my daughter, Capali, that put the badge on me today was also the same daughter that put the badge on me on Monday. However, I tried to get my other daughter to do it, she's painfully shy. She gave me an absolute no. So day three into being the chief, I've already failed the hostile association. But again, it's a tremendous honor. The badge that gets pinned on, it's not just a symbol of authority, it's a sign of a tradition and a legacy of law enforcement of people that have been willing to step, step out and sacrifice for the, for others and, and serve others. And that, that lack of sacrifice and service is not something that is, that is meaningless. I look forward to continuing my service with, with the city of Imperial. Again, it is a tremendous honor, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're very excited to have you on board. Feel too far, Sid, and the rest of our police force, we're excited.
Councilmember Bronwyn?
Just want to wish congratulations to you, chief. I've, I've heard very many great things about you. I look forward to seeing how you transform this department into something that our community is proud of. Good luck.
So, those of you that know me know I have a history of law enforcement, particularly the city of El Centro. So I'm honored to see Chief Reel coming on board. I've worked with him at El Centro. And it's so great to see my, my homecoming, a lot of my El Centro friends here. So, working with you then, I, I still, I'm, I'm very pleased with our decision. If you have always had a good, had good lawful mind, but a great attitude and working with others. And so I, I'm hoping that carries on here, and I'm so excited to have you on board, so welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, and just let you know, you have the whole board's support. So don't be shy, just, we'll be behind you.
He'll be behind you. The chief, thank you very much, and you know what? We, we're happy to have you here. Imperial is a, we like to say it's like a small family. We all, we all get along, we all have our, you have support, we support each other. You know, you look in the audience, it's just the simple support that you have from our community. You know, from our police department, from our sheriff's office, our C H P, from the different cities that are here, the, the tremendous support that you have and we have as a city. We always work together, and you know, we look forward to all the great things that you bring to our department. So, thank you very much for choosing Imperial. And to the family, thank you very much for lending it to us for long. Thank you. Well, I know, I know this is, this is something special, so we'll call it an open mic night. If you guys, anybody like to say something?
You go first. My name is Frank Assavich, I'm assistant chief deputy for the United States Marshal Service for the Southern District of California. I know Chief Reel all my whole life, some of my youth. And what he is, is he's your chief. What he is to me is he's a mentor, and he's helped me get to where I am. And I've always picked shot time for favors, and I'm gonna find, I'm chasing this guy. I miss, you know, when John, when you got a very big suspect, and he's always answered that call. When I was a young man, I was stuck out in the middle of the desert. In the middle of the night, he answered the call, pulling me out. He's always, he's a servant leader, is what you have in the city. And I always thought to myself, how am I ever gonna pay him back? Now sir, you have fifteen deputy United States Marshals today at phone call. They're at your service for your city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's on order.
So anyway, my name is Frank Barry and I'm sheriff of Royal County. And while I go back, way back with the chief, he is a committed person, well-hearted. And his interests, main interest is the public safety of whatever community he is working. So, I had a discussion with him a couple days ago, that you know what? We're there to support you in any way. Because Imperial for us is kind of a special place for us. You know, half of my staff lives in Imperial. Brother, you just need to call, and we'll come around. You guys are resources. And it takes, you know, collaboration. One person can't do this job, you know? So, you know, you got Frank, you have marshals, you have commander from C H P, you know, there's, there's chief, the little man back there, but don't bring John Jett to speak over here. Congratulations, brother, honor offered to you, use it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you guys for being here and showing the support, really appreciate that. Chief, well, we can keep this up later? We'll go back to business for a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know what?
If anybody's wanting to leave, we want to take them.
Yeah, if anybody wanna take, you wanna take pictures before, if anybody wants to leave, we don't wanna hold you.
I think y'all know I'm not very good at this.
You know what? With this, we'll take a five-minute recess real quick for that. You know what? With this, um, we'll take a five-minute recess real quick for that. Keeping on with, uh, presentation, moving on to item eight-five, presentation by Corinne Eugenio, Division Five IED Director.
Good evening, Mayor Abrado, City Council. I'm speaking to you all again. And hopefully this will be the first in a series of quarterly updates. I'll complete some of IED's. I will start off with two parts of the presentation, beginning with general, with human resources and general services. If you have any questions, uh, some of our staff can answer. I've got our energy manager, Matt Smalzer, and one of our water managers, Mike Pacheco. And informally, you may remember the former city attorney, Mr. Chappo Ruck. Our now General Counsel. And so, I will start with the Human Resources Department. Uh, these are some updates that some are, a lot, most are specific to the City of Imperial. Uh, but some of them are outside the jurisdiction. And again, this is just, um, to further the relationship that we have with our whole city, the City of Imperial. A city that is within my jurisdiction, my division, and that I care about so greatly. So, these are some of the things we are, we are working on. And feel free to, uh, reach out to me or anyone of our director's. So, beginning with Human Resources Department, uh, we have our Lithium Industry Force, uh, training, Lith program. Uh, through Imperial Valley College, IED is partnering with Imperial Valley College for an internship placement of seven students. We have a seven-student, summer student program. We are, um, hiring full-time college/university students, graduating high school seniors, and our current college enrollees. June through September, summer employment or employment and then placement based on degree of study. Uh, next, an update from our General Services Department implemented by IED. Uh, implemented by IED Project Labor Agreement and the Outside Line Work, Outside Line Work Project Labor Agreement adopted by the Board of 2023. Uh, we also have the completion of the 2023 Accelerated Vehicle Recruitment Plan for vehicles and equipment subject to the Clean and, uh, Clean Leads Regulation. We also have the implementation of the Samsara Telematics, uh, proxy entire fleet, district fleet, eight hundred and nine vehicles and pieces of equipment. Uh, early times continue to be an issue nationally on items such as transformers, uh, cable wire, cable, wirefolds and meters. Um, staff models for the anticipated consumption patterns of critical stock material. Forty-eight months in the future, which enable the IED to secure these supplies for operational departments and repairs. Uh, we have the completion of the IED's Board 2021 Arbor Day Initiative to plant three hundred trees over three years, uh, at IED facilities. In 2021, we had one hundred and forty-seven, 2022, one hundred and twenty-seven, and 2023 with twenty-seven. And we also have the installation of EV charging infrastructure at five district locations for all the electrics and heroin trucks and bucket trucks involved in the operational highway program. Uh, next, we have our Water Department update, and that will be presented to you by our own Mr. Mike Pacheco, who's also in the whole of the city council.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening. Thank you for, for having, having us here. If they don't come, certainly City Council meetings, but great, great, great one so far. So, just a couple of projects. I was asked, um, maybe talk about a couple of projects that, um, are in, you know, in the City of Imperial City limit. So, the first one here is the Dalton drain. So, if you guys remember, we've had quite a bit of rain this year. And, uh, your staff, Dennis, along with Dennis, um, you know, reached out to us saying that, you know, there were pretty, a lot of water came in, got high a little bit. And so, we were worried about the, the housing project down, further down from, uh, I think 15th Street. So, we went ahead and, and, and cleaned that. We don't have any ag runoff anymore on this drain. Um, but we, you know, uh, we do wanna keep it clean and safe for you guys. So, we went ahead and did that from Barioli all the way to Neckel Road. So, we cleaned that section. Now, it turns, and then that drain turns east. It's a pipeline. So, that was quick clean to the city back in, I don't know, nineties, something or two-hundred. And so, just to, just to let you guys know that, that that is yours. But, uh, you know, if you need help, if it ever gets plugged or something, let us know. Um, the next project, and we're really excited about this project for you guys, is the inner care. So, the drain or the canal, the, uh, use like canal there. For that big manhole that you see there, um, that was the entrance to the inner care. So, we needed to lower that, replace it because it was old. Uh, and then lower it to road level because you get, you're gonna widen Neckel Road, and that's gonna be the entrance. So, we've done that. We did that a couple of weeks ago. We did run into a little problem when we finished. There was a leak. So, this week, we took it out again and we fixed the leak on that. So, I think it's all set, uh, for you guys to, to do your work as far as widening that hole and, and, and then, been working with Paul from Gapton on this. So, um, I think everything's good. And then that, and I don't have a picture of it, but the drain just east of there, um, they're gonna pipeline that. And so, the whole section of the inner care facility. So, they're gonna pipeline after they think their confidence is asking for a turn like somewhere. Um, so that was really the two main projects that, um, that kind of, uh, was around the city of Imperial. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy. If not, I'll turn it over to Max Smalzer with the energy.
So, I have a question real quick. So, on here you have the altar, on our presentation, we have a replacement of manual gate.
Yeah, so that was a, that was a mistake. These, these winters are really out of your jurisdiction. I mean, they don't really affect, but I, I can talk real quick about them.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Uh, so our city manager is always very concerned when you measure stuff with a stick. When you have the automated oven, do they still measure how much water's delivered with a stick?
So, no. So, we read that off and completed the statement.
Dennis, I think I just heard a bus go by.
So, yeah, so. I'll go for the real place. You're gonna be. Your automation, uh, because these are some replacements. And then this one, Wayne Island, so you can probably. Now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Abrado, Councilmembers, Matt Smalzer, Energy Department. Again, thank you for having me. And I'm currently not on any boards, uh. So, uh, I just wanted to give a brief update, uh, some brief.
So, does that mean you wanna join the board?
I'm good. I'm kinda. Uh, just wanted to go over some, some recent energy projects that are going on actually in the City of Imperial. So, uh, we have, uh, replaced 24 bad order streetlights. So, bad order is a term used and we broke in, something electrically wrong with it, or just, uh, you know, pass its, its useful light. Um, we also have some customer service program operations. Uh, we pro- processed 94 applications. That could be anywhere from solar on your roof, uh, to actually just installing a new facility. Um, and the total for just the Imperial area is nine megawatts of load. So, that's a pretty substantial chunk. Um, we also have some light construction projects, um, in and around the City of Imperial. We replaced five distribution, uh, transformers. We removed some abandoned underground that was, uh, in the area. Completed, uh, three service wires, uh, replacement jobs, and replaced five distribution levels light poles. Um, we're also working on, and this, um, I think will be of interest to you. We're looking at metering, uh, for our pole attachment, where we're looking at a Wi-Fi option for cameras. So, that will, um, we're working on that currently internally. We'll be bringing that back out. But I know there was some interest with Imperial on that. And. These are just some other jobs. Um, they're not necessarily in Imperial, but just some major energy projects we're working on. We are doing, uh, doing our rebust, uh, with Bay Five, an essential switching station. Um, that's a really big job. We're looking forward to getting that done this summer. Uh, upgrade work for the ninety-two KBCLC in-lines, and that's in the Coachella Valley area. And we did, uh, we're in a tech repay, the one hundred and fifty megawatt, six hundred megawatt hour, uh, IPP. So, an independent power producer battery. So, that's pretty exciting for us. We haven't had one of that magnitude yet. And, uh, we did commission a new switching station, which that ties into, um, in our system. And we have several, uh, generation projects underway currently, uh, just getting ready for summer operations. And we will be bringing our summer preparedness to our board, uh, at the end of April. So, happy to answer any questions.
And do you have a quick question? You were talking about the, um, the solar. One of the things that I've heard complaints of, or we, I've received complaints of or comments about is when people are going to solar on their residence and they have to wait for IED to basically flip the switch to go to solar.
Right.
They're saying they're, I, I mean, who knows? Two sides of the story. I'm getting complaints that there, it's taking six months to a year to get that switch flipped. Is that common or is that, is there plans to change that timeline?
So, we, we were innovated with requests and we are, we're trying to facilitate those as fast as possible. Um, we did dig into some. We have a, a concern line that's actually on our website where you can check on that. You get a response back. I'm actually gonna meet, um, some upper-level, uh, management just to make sure that they're getting addressed. We did also just recently roll out PowerClick, which is kind of, um, it's a software that you can use and your developer, when you put the solar on, that they can actually track. So, um, that's, that's really new, but I encourage you to look at that. Typically, now the, the lead times, we, we go on a first come, first served, um, as we can. So, um, those lead times seem a little, seem a little excessive, but if there's any issue, please go and break it down.
Thank you.
I have one, if I may, and I shouldn't maybe know the answer. I know we get, one of the questions that we get is sometimes on permits for, uh, people coming by houses. Is there a company that are authorized by IED to provide solar?
No, there are currently no affiliations with IED and solar. Um, we have had a, a campaign where we've seen signs with the IED logo on them. And just for clarity, IED does not have any solar affiliations at the time.
Yeah, with beige tattoos and.
Yeah.
Well, I've heard a lot of horror stories, unfortunately.
I had that on Friday.
Some are fraudulent, some are just trying to sell you solar, but, yeah, be wary. But definitely, definitely.
And these are things that, that we appreciate that because I know that these meetings are on social media. People will see this and so it, it does help to get that information out. Maybe that's something we can put on our.
Great question.
Put on our website or something to let the residents know that, that it's not affiliated. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate your time being here. Thank you for the updates. Look forward to second quarter. And with that, as far as presentations, I had one more presentation for, uh, Chief Lance from River County Fire. He is not here and we will move that to the next meeting. So, with that, I'll be moving on to, uh, the consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion without discretion. Any council member or any other person requests any item to be considered separately, that item will be taken up, uh, determined by the mayor. With that.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, you have one change. They've got a motion and a second.
Councilmember, um, Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
With that, moving on to, uh, seat action items. Moving, uh, C one authorized to seat bid for Aitken Boulevard rehabilitation project between Belory Way and SR eighty six Delta Drive project. STPL dash five one three four zero two seven.
Good evening, council. Uh, as you already know, the city secured, uh, one million one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars through the surface transportation block program. And this money is going to help to rehabilitate, uh, the section from Belory to SR eighty six, which will be a grind grinding in overlay in addition to bait bike. City staff, uh, recommends, uh, third session to sit bids, and I understand what the questions that the mayor.
Questions? This is a project that's been coming for a while, right?
We've come for a while. Yes, we we were ready to go, um, in November, but then we're going to be installing a ramp. We need to wait until March.
All right, no questions?
Are we going to have a problem if we're going up to bid now? And you have to wait for your bid time and reward and everything else. It'll be put as past March and April.
It will, it would, it would. Uh, but we were working on other projects at the same time, so it was a bit of a.
It's not going to, the temperature's not going to mess with the product.
No, it's not. Not. This is the time to start, you know, by March.
It won't mess with the product. It won't mess with the product. It'll mess with the employees putting it down, though.
You worried about it being too cold?
Correct. Just, yeah.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, okay. I'll make the motion to a friend.
Yeah, motion. Those are. Second by Ms. Burnwood, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C two authorization to seat bid for Aitken Road Boulevard Class Two Bike Lane Project from Belory Way to Austin Road.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember. Um, we were able to secure, uh, three hundred and sixty four thousand, four hundred and twenty four dollars through the C Mac. Um, this money will help to install the bike. And go from Belory to Austin. Uh, staff recommends third session to sit bids, and I understand what the questions that the mayor.
Questions? All right, you had a motion? You had a motion, Mr. Basil Martinez?
I'll say it.
Second from. Those are, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C three, accept profit six eight per capita grant. Project five has completed and authorized staff to record the deeds. Uh, that'll be by Mr. Lopez.
Sir Mayor, members of the council, as you may or may not remember, in twenty twenty, uh, the city accepted an award of one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars and, uh, nine hundred and fifty two and zero cents. Uh, five projects were identified, uh, for the per capita grant. Um, we have now since completed, actually been completed for a while. It's been a process to, uh, get the projects inspected. Um, we finally have them inspected. Actually, today they came and inspected. Uh, part of the process of completion packet packets is filing the deed restriction. Uh, what the deed restriction does is it ensures that the property remains, uh, as is, or at least, uh, until two twenty forty eight. And it doesn't, uh, we keep it up, and it doesn't, uh, you know, alter it, change the property's use, uh, keep it open to the public and such. And, uh, the deed restrictions would, uh, be part of the process to submit the completion package package for reimbursement. That's separate question.
Questions? Good project.
So moved.
You had a motion by, 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 second by Mr. Tucker, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C four, approved resolution number two zero two four dash zero eight, accepting the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, uh, state citizens' option for public safety cost grant, uh, allocation for expenditure plan. That'll be by, uh, is that cheap? There you go. Many. That's right. You didn't hear what it's many cheap.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. That number for you is our top funding for the fiscal year twenty two twenty three in the amount of a hundred thousand and two cents. Uh, the expenditure plan outlines the, uh, what we would like to spend the money on. And the first two items have a built in fifteen percent, uh, contingency, just in case prices go up. Uh, first one is the much anticipated life scan machine, which will be purchased immediately upon approval. Uh, the second is thirty four ballistic vests, which we are not going to be purchasing them all at once. This money will be set aside, and we'll have the next five years, if not more, to use that money. And this is also in anticipation for growth within the the department. Um, the last, uh, item number three, the the new animal control facility, we're setting aside that money. Um, that's only a small portion of what we've been looking into for a new animal control facility, uh, documents, uh, full enclosed facility, um, all up to standards, and that will be purchased in the future. I'll stand up.
Is this life scan? This was brought up before. This is the actual, the life scan itself?
Uh, yes, it's it's been a long process to arrive at this point. Uh, as you may precede your tenure on the council, where where there was, uh, a a presentation by staff, uh, and I think there was some misunderstanding as to whether the funds were actually allocated to work contingent upon, uh, uh, a grant. And and some purchase did not happen. Fast forward, uh, to, uh, Ms. Guerrero's, uh, tenure here at the city. And she and she, uh, had, uh, uh, knowledge of another potential source through, uh, Imperial County. And and that also didn't pan out. And so if, uh, this, uh, I think we're at a point where it's actually going to happen.
Just for my own thought process, I've heard twice since the council about the life scans. Is the construction work where it's going to go all completed? I know that they were.
Yes, it's good. The life scan machine will be going near the front lobby, kind of around the corner, um, right by the the chief's assistant.
Okay.
So that's, it's all operating.
Any other questions? So what's our timeframe to get this in?
Our timeframe ASAP, hopefully. Um, no, we talked, we talked to the company probably about four to six weeks.
Okay. Um, can we get an update, make sure that it's actually here?
It is.
So is it a?
Yes. Take pictures.
I will personally order this thing tomorrow.
Okay.
If you guys.
Do you know how much you guys will charge for the public teams or not yet?
We not, not yet, because we're going to be kind of doing a wide variety of things that that we do not do currently with with what how we rub fingerprints. Uh, so that's going to change.
So there is a plan for that?
There is.
Lots of nonprofits. They're all nurses here. At, like, the various places they can go, so it's like in the COV or.
Yeah, I I know I B R P does, and, um, multiple agencies do, um, so we're just going to join that in. It'll help out the entire valley. Um, I know we have a a lot of people who contact, um, our records division all the time, asking if we do the life scan. Unfortunately, right now we don't, but this will help alleviate the.
Nurses have to do it all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a question. Second?
Got a motion, second, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Thank you. Yes, Chuck. Um, moving on to item C five, approve and adopt the city's updated record retention policy by President. Captain Turner, city attorney.
So there's this item and the next item both, uh, refer to our records. That includes both the physical, uh, documents that each and every one of the staff has here and also electronic versions. So this first one is an update of our policy that addresses everything but police, because we'll we'll meet with the chief and and update theirs in the future, the near future. And what it does is it breaks, it takes all the information from the Secretary of State, and I worked with their office, and breaks it down by the individual departments, the way that word listed. So we have our own IT section, we have our own HR section, um, to address each one of these. So for every single record, you'll see, um, also there's a highlighted P next to the permanent records, uh, in this. Those are the ones that we have to keep forever, whether they're electronically stored or, uh, in in paper. So this is just an update. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? With that, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt the city's updated record detention policy.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion from Ms. Mendoza, second from Ms. Burnwood, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to items C six, adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine, authorization to destruction of obsolete city records from Mrs. Captain Turner.
So with relate to the last policy and all of the hundreds of laws that address the records, um, sometimes there we will keep all the permanent. We're not asking you to delete any of those, but some of them we have to keep for seven years or some for three years. We've reviewed them, um, and given general specific instructions, um, and categories of things that we can't delete. And I certify that by law, it is acceptable to get rid of those. Um, and so you you will also find a little bit uniquely that sometimes, you know, Alton will have something, and Christina will have the exact same document. So one of these, um, orders of destruction is if you have two departments that have the same document, if they agree in writing, okay, I'll hold it, you hold it, we can delete. So that in order to delete records, uh, this is, we need your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion from Ms. Burnwood?
Second.
Second from Mr. Tucker, please vote.
Councilmember Burnmore? Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Basil Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Apparano?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we move on to E, reports. We'll start with department, uh, reports. Mr. Moore? Lopez, who's who's barbecue Saturday? Hopefully the weather cooperates. There's some concern about winds.
Kind of looking at that. We don't have a work weather advisory right now on the fact that, kind of, will deter us, but moving forward, we are sending out emails to our editor saying, please account for, uh, weighing down your canopies, securing your items that you're selling, those different things. Uh, so hopefully we have a an event that goes off of that hitch. I want to thank, uh, the council for their participation in roles, uh, with, um, big public judging to giving out trophies and different things for the event. Hope you all can make it, and, uh, we hope the public can come, uh, come to Saturday for five to nine downtown Imperial and, uh, have a lot of fun, light music, holy riots, and that's just a few things to come listen to. So come out and, uh, those are watching us on Facebook, live, come on and join us on on Saturday.
Tell me, as a follow up to that, something I've been seeing a lot on social media is people complaining that the city was not doing anything to promote it. Just for the the sake of the people listening on Facebook, can you kind of give a rundown of how the city is trying to promote this?
So, uh, we were do advertising, uh, before we dissolved the community services page, both on the newly, uh, formed parks and recreation page, the community services page, uh, the city of Imperial has been a collaborator on the post as well for the different things involved with the project. Uh, we released, uh, content as early as, uh, mid February related to the event. We also have the digital display boards that are out for two and a half weeks or more out there on highways, uh, advertising the event. Uh, we've done reels, we've done giveaways, uh, for tickets, uh, for Triton, uh, and we've done, I think, we've just recently boosted another post that we put out there for the main stage. So I think in terms of advertising the event to make it a successful one, uh, through the Chamber of Commerce also, uh, city has done and the staff for the parks and recreation done, has exhausted, uh, advertising and then done, uh, we've done our due diligence. That's been outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Tom. Look forward to Saturday. Mr. Strah?
I have nothing to report. However, our G I U project manager started last Monday, so.
I'm so excited.
Look forward to a lot of good projects.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll go to this side.
On Tuesday, March twenty sixth at five thirty, maybe for about an hour, they're going to have new activities for kids if you bring little ones and stuff. Has something small just to finally open it up. So if you'd like to make it, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, uh, I'll extol my. Like to welcome to highly anticipated, uh, new hires that we've onboarded this week. Uh, so we have our chief of police, Aaron Reel, who met for the evening, and we also have our G I S project coordinator, Premier Robbs. So we welcome them. Uh, we're very excited for them to come on board.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Nothing to report. Fire?
Uh, Chief Lance, sir, apologize for not being here. I know he had a presentation for you guys. Unfortunately, wasn't able to make it due to health issues. But he looks forward to seeing you guys next scheduled meeting.
Appreciate that. Chief?
Actually, nothing to report. I, uh, again, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to everybody in the council. To your manager for the one welcome. It's become immediately familiar because it's Ramito, who's on the day of fire, and I should have been like, hey, I don't like that. So it's it's been immediately familiar, very, very warm as far as the welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, moving on to our city attorney. All right. How about our city manager?
Um, just a couple of things. You're sorry, I should thank them while they were here. I appreciate the fact that IID came. I found, uh, uh, that, uh, as big as IID is, I've always found them to be very responsive. Uh, and so I appreciate that. I think, of course, Mike sits on the Hopeville City Council, so he feels your pain, I I I think, in ways that maybe others don't. Uh, look, I found him in particular to be very responsive. Um, uh, with respect to Chief Reel, I would I would just say that that, uh, I did not hold the fact that he's going to be a future lawyer against him in the in the process of recruitment. So look forward to some good conversation.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our simpler. Go, Ms. Alicia Martinez?
I attended your show, which was always a good time, so thank you for that. I also attended Mrs. Thames, our local resident. She's ninety years old. Something amazing to see, and she talked about, oh, she's ninety. Um, she grew up here in the city of Imperial. That was where there was electricity and having her lights and so forth. So that was a good time to to see a lot of the Imperial residents there. Then in addition to that, um, oh my gosh, there's something else. Think about it. Let me think about it right now. Never forgot about it. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, I can't remember. I'll come back to me.
It'll be all right. Ms. Burnwood?
Um, so I attended, I was speaker, keynote speaker at the mental health fair for IHS with their NAMI club. Um, just, yeah, it was really cool to see how they actually have like a mental health, uh, club pretty much. And it was like super well attended, and I was, you know, going back to my where I graduated high school, so it was like pretty cool. Does not look anything the same. Does not look anything the same, which made me feel very because not very, uh, familiar territory anymore. Um, but yeah, it was really cool, I was really proud of all the students that, because that's again, because I was definitely not in the team when I was in high school. Um, me and my kids attended the Carney Asada cook-off last weekend, um, with the Sunrunners Club. Um, they really much so enjoyed all, seeing all the old cars. Um, I've been very busy with the I V healthcare district, all their meetings. Um, but yeah, I think we're off to a good start, so nothing really to report back on that yet, but, let's see.
Thank you. Mendoza?
Um, same as, uh, councilmember Abesha Martinez, they attended the, the air show. Um, always a great time out there, and just amazing the, the work they do out there. Um, as soon as we can be, being here, I head out, I'm heading to Burbank for, uh, this California League of Cities Policy Committee meeting tomorrow morning, so, um, looking forward to seeing what's, what's coming down the road and how I can help them, and, and look, look forward to seeing the whole community on, on, on Saturday at the the special event.
Mr. Tucker?
I also attended the Blue Angels, and she's back this weekend in the Tri-Tape cook-off, and invite everybody to come out and have a good time.
Thank you. Um, I don't know, busy couple weeks, um, we attended, Ms. Abesha Martinez, myself, and Ms. Garetto attended, uh, ribbon cutting for, uh, floral remedies at Ticker Plaza, that was neat, so, uh, it's different, nice flowers, nice plants, all that, so, so, good thing to see. Also attended the air show, once again, they, they don't disappoint, some of the things you get to see there, that I was astonished by the, what Jets can do now. Doesn't take a lot for me to get excited about that. Um, also attended the car show, there were a lot of cars, good turnout for them, it was nice to see that. Um, attended our, uh, the first annual, uh, football tournament with our fire department, so that was good to see, you know, different cities coming out and joining, playing football, flag football, so, good job. It was tough, got hard competition, but you know what, it's about showing up, thank you guys for being there. The, uh, I also got to tour the fire department, uh, Mr. Marita, myself toured our station four with our local fire department, got a tour of the fire station, got to see the new fire trucks and all that good stuff, so brought back old memories, which was nice, so thank you guys for all the hard work and everything you guys do for our city, appreciate that. Um, couple things, tomorrow is state, the state and the county? That is tomorrow at the, I don't remember the name of the place. Prestige Event Center on Hebrew, uh, Zobra, Hebrew Road, yes, that one. So there's, there's that one, uh, that's tomorrow, and then we have, uh, the twenty-eighth, we have Cal Cities Meeting, so it's also coming up. Been attending though, so with that, I mean, it's, like I said, it's been a little busy week, couple weeks, so, uh, look forward to Saturday. Join that, having a little fun and seeing the competition, so thank you very much for all the hard work. With that, staff, thank you guys for all the hard work you guys do, and I will adjourn this meeting at eight thirteen.